You had the slide deck over here, too? Oh, you got somebody else. Yep, somebody else. Hey. Okay, you get extra credit. Tammy, you. Tammy, you get extra credit. You're good. You get extra credit. Thank you. Okay. Now Zach's back. We got everybody here. All right, let's go ahead and show it is 6:31. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and our special meeting. And we'll go ahead and take care of roll call.
District one, Elderman, Elderwoman Anna Corillo.
Here.
District two, Elderman Richard Hughes.
Here.
District three, Elderman David Emery.
Here.
District four, Elderman Michael Rodriguez.
Here.
And District five, Elderman Matthew Martinez.
Here.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you can please rise for their pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a review of justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, well, let's go ahead and get our special meeting going. I know we got a presentation and then we start getting into our our budget and our priorities, discussions that go along with that. So let's go ahead and take care of number four, presentation, discussion, and direction concerning water and wastewater study being completed by Nugent Strategies. So Zach.
Yeah, so just want to introduce Matthew Garrett. You have seen him before, obviously, in a different capacity, helping out with the drainage fee that was being implemented, but they have council agreed to proceed with Nugent helping us do water and wastewater rate studies. So Matthew is here to speak on that, so I'll give it over to him.
Awesome. Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be back with you. I wore a special boot for you. I don't know if you noticed, that's new attire. But again, Matthew Garrett with Nugent Strategy and Solutions, always a pleasure to help cities like yours and to be back in front of you. So not sure if you've already perused this slide deck, but want to go over a couple of key inputs affecting your water and wastewater utility this evening. Of course, that lends itself to an analysis of rates. That's what I'm helping you with. And so I have a rate projection, a few recommendations, and then some thoughts, things that you may consider taking action on in future periods based on some of our input and feedback as we visited with city staff. So the first few slides, I really talk about the big objectives. Obviously, the utility is an enterprise fund. We'd like it to be self-sufficient. And including 2025, plus the next five years, a little caveat to that 50 million, the city is anticipating projects nearing $50 million. Now, on the books, it's a little less, but I add inflation because I think it's going to happen. And so after I've inflated the dollars, so if you contrast that number to your own CIP without inflation, it's going to be a little bit less. All that to say, you have a lot of big needs coming up. Additionally, we were asked to look at some alternatives. One of those was a meter equivalency. We'll talk about what that means, what that could mean to your ratepayers. And then lastly, I believe council has taken action on some conservation surcharges. And so we'll touch on that as long as you'd like, or as little, about not only what it means, but how to actually implement it, how to turn that on and off, along with the various stage four, stage five conservation requirements. So the planned capital investments, in a nutshell, you have about $22 million of needed wastewater and $28 million over the next five to six years of need, primarily on wastewater. You'll see in 27 and 28, that 17 million is pretty much the wastewater treatment plant. In the out years, you do have some force mains and some other lines relative to the wastewater system. For water, you have a water well and an elevated storage tank. You also have a number of water lines to move water around your system. So you may already be well-versed in your capital plans, but those are stacked up over the next five years. Those are going to create the need, we believe, for an additional debt burden. So we don't think you can fund that. Currently, you have about 1,800 connections. You're expected to grow by about 700. And so we don't think the current 1,800 can pay for all of it, right, all at once. And so we will at least anticipate in this model issuing debt. And so you'll see that top orange bar, there's some existing debt service in a light orange. Sorry, the contrast isn't very good on screen here. But we don't have much in the way of yellow capital outlays, meaning we're pretty much debt financing most of our capital needs. So we have that small, light orange, existing debt service, and that top bar that you see in dark orange is the additional debt from these new capital projects. So currently, your rate structures look like this. You have identical volumetric rates for residential, commercial, and small business. They contrast in the minimum charges. You'll see that $8.50 additional charge on the commercial minimum. Otherwise, everything is the same, including your wastewater charges. The calculation, however, for residential sewer is based on the winter average, so that's a small footnote in the bottom right. So the two contrasts are, commercial pays a little more on the minimum already, and residents have a winter average. But otherwise, these are the rates across the board in your community. So if we do nothing, right, this, it's not going to function. As you saw, the numbers growing substantially, right? We cannot fund through current rates the CIP plan, and that's all that this chart illustrates. You'll see revenues and expenses on the far left. The middlemost graph is your debt service coverage. So as that debt service starts to become due and payable in years two, three, four, and so on, the coverage requirement that that carries, meaning you've made enough revenue in that year to pay all of your O&amp;M and your debt service and some surplus, right? We target 1.1, and in 2028, you would miss the mark if you do nothing with rates. So too, with days cash on hand, that can ebb and flow, but effectively, we cannot have our days cash go below the 90-day target according to our policy. So one of the tools that we've employed to help mitigate sort of the shortfall is to change the way we charge minimums. So there is a standard promulgated by AWWA, that's the American Waterworks Association. It's in the M1 manual, the prior edition, and the recently released edition. And that effectively says that a larger meter has a higher burden and stress on the total system for the instantaneous water demand. It's a function of the continuous flow, the max duty rating on a meter. You already actually have this in some of your rate setting, but this is one of the items we recommended. This does mirror the multipliers in your current water acquisition fees. And so you'll see that that first 5/8 inch meter would be a one times factor, so no change effectively. So no additional increment for meter equivalency charges. The 3/4 inch, we also held that at a one times. Starting from there, it's a 1.67 times. So you can see the effect on commercial. If we were to employ this on the commercial and the small business, those two columns to the right are the effective changes that you'd see. Again, at 5/8ths and 3/4, there's no change. And then it goes, instead of 2850 on a 3/4 inch for commercial, a 1 inch would be 4750, a 2 inch would be 152, and so on. And this would be the charge at 100% meter equivalency, so kind of the rip the Band-Aid approach. We've also.
Look, can you go back?
Oh, yes, sir.
So question I have on this one, because we had talked about this, and I know maybe a discussion, the first one on the on the residential, we did say that there was going to be an acceptable size for residential, but if there was something like a resident comes in and says, hey, I want to go ahead and get a 3-inch connecting in there, that there would be an additional cost that goes along with that.
There certainly could be, so we could put in a.
We had talked about that before.
Okay.
In here. So in a sense of just based on the need, because, you know, you are going to put a little additional stress than the normal, right?
Yes, sir. Don't have that baked in, but that's something we can absolutely do. Right now, we haven't employed it on residential. But it may be akin to your small business class. I think that warrants some review as we go forward, is a small business based on its meter size? And if it is, then maybe the small business 3/4 and 5/8ths wouldn't see a change, and the residential 3/4 and 5/8ths wouldn't see a change. But everybody with a 1-inch meter and bigger would pay a premium. Now, it may not be as much as a commercial premium. That's up to you and the city's druthers. But we could put in some function of a meter equivalency charge on the larger residential users.
Yeah, we were looking more towards the bottom. The other ones would stay the same with the residential. But with this chart itself, did you get any backup data of how many connections we have based on the sizes?
Yes, sir. Well, we had to to employ it, so I'll try to rattle them off, or I can grab them in my notes if you want to actually hear about.
As long as it's covered, because I'm just interested, I mean, to be able to see how we're broken down into the different categories.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go grab the numbers. We have one 4-inch in town currently, and that's the hotel. The 3 inches, there's five. We're assuming, without looking at like the delving deep, that's your school locations and HEB. Your 2 inches, where you start getting, there's the share line of people wearing that 2-inch meter. So that's about 70 or so businesses that are in that 2-inch category. So that's really where your share of the business community is at. So, and then it kind of goes down from there.
If you want to hear a rattle down of all the sizes, the counts, I can do it.
No, as long as you, maybe we can produce that, Zach, if we can actually break it down so the whole council can kind of see how we're broken up into into the different, that would be great.
Just have a note to follow up. I'll send that through, Zach, and you can. Sure. Yeah, so we, small business has 188 total connections. We know that some of those are larger than small, right? They're larger than the 1-inch. So that's to be fleshed out to what small business means in this next ordinance, if it's not well-defined already. Commercial has 88 accounts, many of which are larger meters or over a 1-inch, sorry. We don't have that many small, I think we have 10 commercial 5/8 inch meters today on the smallest side. So if we were to do this without adjusting the residential, as the mayor suggested, we could look at, if you do this only on commercial and you do it starting in 2026, it yields approximately $140,000 of additional revenue for the utility in 2026. Many of my clients that employ this don't like change all in one year. So if you wanted to phase that in, that's what this slide shows you. If you were to phase this in over five years, and so we take what the normative 100% equivalency is, and we break it down into 20% per year increases, this is that first step. So 1 inch, instead of paying 2850 today's rate, would pay 3230, and that's before the rate increases that we may need. This is just comparing current to the meter equivalency against current, right?
Your initial statement.
Sure.
Your initial statement was that the base charge increase, right, based on your scale here, was due to the fact of how much impact a 4, 3, or 2-inch line has on the system, correct? So how can you say we increased revenues of 142? That water is going to be used. It's not like we're getting additional monies here. It's just all going to be part of their overall billing. So if a commercial, let's say a 3-inch line, you have here 304 for commercial, right? But if their average.
Let me line up with you. Yes, sir.
But if their average bill is $1,000, we don't get no increased revenues off of that.
Well, we might be averaging.
Am I looking at this the wrong way?
No, I think what you may not see is that this is the minimum only.
Right.
And so their volumes, assuming they're using for business purposes, aren't going to materially change because they're minimum changes.
Right.
So if we're making 1,000 today, and we increase that by whatever, 270, then we're going to make 1,000 to 70 in the first month that we employ 100% equivalency. So the total bill is going to be $1,270, not 1,000.
Why is that?
Because this is a minimum charge.
Yeah, so the minimum, if I'm using, if I'm, if my bill is $1,000.
Oh, it's a base rate. So I'm sorry. It's not a, I do apologize. This is not a minimum floor to be built. This is the base fee.
Oh, okay.
Plus a volumetric. I apologize. If I go back, no, that's, I appreciate you asking, because Zach can be easily confused with the way I speak about it.
Yeah, I was like, how do you, how do you realize 142?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's the base.
Yeah, so again, I, minimum rates, base rates, we use them synonymously, but I understand now.
No, okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, 140, if we were to do it all in one fell swoop, if we phase it in, it's another $28,000 at 20%. And again, this is without changing the residential customer class. So kind of all else equal, and this is in addition to whatever rate increases we might really need for the whole system, right? So to pause, any other questions on meter equivalency? Because this is a major tenet of the rate design. I can tell you it's pretty prevalent. I don't know if you've looked around or seen this elsewhere, but it's very common to charge meter size or meter equivalencies in the base rates for water users. Okay, no other questions? Moving along. So the rate plan, as we've proposed, again, I've shown you your total expenses over time. I've shown you the debt and how that's going to impact years four and five in a substantial way. We would recommend that you increase all charges by 5% starting in 2027 for water. And so this is parallel to any action you take on those minimum charge equivalencies. So that's one track. Let's do that. But we also need to raise our rates for all users, 5% starting in '27. So in '26, we don't currently see a change or forecast a need to change residents. Now, council could say we'd rather do 4.5% for the next five years, right? So you could phase it in at a smaller amount and start kind of feeling the pain today, just so you have smaller chunks to take out of this. So certainly, that's an option. But what we'd like to do is minimize the number of changes on a ratepayer. And so for the residents, for the sewer, we've already kind of let off with the sewer need being pretty large, with the wastewater treatment plant. We are forecasting a need to increase rates by 10% to all customer types in 2026. And so as soundbites or messaging goes, a 10% increase on your sewer bill and nothing on your water bill may be more palatable. And so we do take that into account, not a spin factor, but just the reality of having done this for a number of councils. There may be an upside to only changing one of the rates as you start to tackle the wastewater treatment. A big caveat here, all this is predicated on my assumptions. Your team, your city administrator, still looking at the total CIP. It's certainly your choice in the future to fund those big projects. But if we funded everything as I've lined it out, this is an approach, not the only, but an approach that I think smooths out the total need. And you'll see on wastewater, that does ramp up 2% per year into that last year. The upside of doing that, instead of taking a 15% chunk now, is we might do some things in the future to mitigate the cost. And so, any questions on the plan? As presented. Okay. So what that would look like, again, water rates would remain the same. This is the residential rate class. Again, barring the meter equivalency adjustments the mayor mentioned, we could certainly put those in place or bring those in in the future. But right now, water customers would see no change, wastewater would see a 10% increase. That takes that minimum charge up from 20 to 22, that first build tier from 60 to 66, and so on. The commercial class, slightly different. Again, our proposed plan starts to phase in the 20% meter equivalency, and so you'll see the contrast. If we had not changed the minimum rate on the resident, right, we wouldn't change that minimum rate for the 5/8ths and 3/4 here on commercial, but we would start to implement the meter equivalency at 20%, or 1/5th of the way, right? And so you'll see, this is the proposed rate plan. Again, no adjustment to the water rates, just to keep things simple while we pull in 10% increases on the wastewater side. And then lastly, you do have a small business class. I know that, I don't know who's running it now, as we visited with Lynette and certainly with Zach, I think where small fits and how this all lines up is something they're going to dig into. But based on our current count, about 200 of these, they would maintain that $20, but because it is a non-residential use, we have employed the meter equivalency on this class. And so it's another 20% step, same sewer rates. I don't want to speed through it, and I don't want to belabor the points either. All good? All good, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, is that a question coming or not? So ultimately, we have built these rates around a financial plan that works with your key performance indicators. We will have some revenues that are higher than the upcoming expenses as we start to build our balances. As you'll see, our debt service coverage, when we get to that fifth year, is just on the skin of our teeth, 1.11 against a target of 1.1. What this means is you will likely have some cash balances, and in those future years, I think you'll be able to buy down that rate increase. So you don't need 10, 12, 14, 16, 18%, but maybe 10 and 12s all the way through, or 10 and up to 14 and cap out. But because you're going to start putting in your rate plan, which, if you're going out for bonds, if you're going to take out a big loan, they want to see that the city has the means and a plan to finance that big note. Surely, with 1,800 customers, $50 million is a big note. And so if our rate plan says, we're willing to, if we need to, put in the rates that we need, and if you know that you have a couple other levers and dials you can pull to maybe not have to face that in the future, I think that's an upside for you. It's an upside as you present it to a bond rating agent.
So question.
Sure.
Question for you. So when, when we're looking at the expenses versus revenue.
Yes, sir.
Right in here, when you're actually looking at the revenue, all these future years include what we predict as impact fees that are coming in, all the new folks that are going to be paying, companies, all that is in here.
We have included all of the growth. It's about 700 connections. The impact fees, I think, are under review currently. To, yeah, not to. Cobb Finley's still exploring.
With your logic.
Yes, sir.
That you're saying that we might be able to make some other adjustments later on, where we don't have to do as much.
Right.
Because we actually look better, right?
Yes, sir. In the last several impact fee studies I've supported, we've grown that impact fee per unit or living unit equivalent at least by 25% because costs have risen so much. So with Cobb Finley's final analysis, depending on your growth, depending on the total cost, your impact fee, again, it's another one of the council's druthers. You said, not only, the maximum's formulaic, right? The max is a number, the engineers or finance people come back with. Council sets what to assess. So if this council decides to assess more, then you may have some room to charge ratepayers less because growth will help pay for more growth.
There you go.
Yes, sir. So these are choices.
And I will say, and I will say in this form, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been very little, because we're basing it on what we have in the past, there's very little commercial growth factored into that as well. So we do know there's opportunities coming, and there will be changes to that, but that would factor in that later on.
We start the process now, we start the process with an understanding that there could be a probability of actually being less in the future for our residents. You know, even though we're looking at a bigger one as we get through the years of the percentage that we're going to be charging, it could be less.
Absolutely. We do recommend, with or without a professional consultant like our firm, this should be looked at every year with budget. I assume it is anyways. Maybe not in this detail, but your total needs are an annual decision-making process, so we're really putting forth a 26 proposed rate, fiscal 26 proposed rate. 27 through 30 are really just foreshadowing, and it's a forecast to let you know on plan, this is what it's looking like. And as the mayor suggested, you get to evaluate and make decisions that may change that outcome as well.
So will that impact the, is that for previous?
No.
Plan or new ones?
New.
It has to be for infrastructure that is supporting growth. Now, the infrastructure doesn't have to all be new. I share with councils and impact fee updates, City of Denton, I did there. In 2018, we included a reservoir built in 1950, right? So it had capacity to serve new growth. So if you have an old line and it still supports new growth, and Cobb Finley says, yes, this has 10% more capacity, they can help pay for sunk cost, but it is absolutely growth, and only new connections pay that impact fee.
That's what that is useful.
Or an upside. So if you have a 5/8ths in a property and it's redeveloped to a 2-inch, they would pay the increment between those two.
Which is why their only aim might be to find a prepared.
So on the expense side, your calculation is based on new growth. What about our existing system and any maintenance that, have you looked into that and have you paid close attention to our current system and included that into the expense part?
Yeah, to the extent the capital plan includes maintenance of infrastructure, I have it. Additionally, your O&amp;M budget.
Do you live closely at what we currently have?
So, well, I won't.
Are you using estimates?
I, I'm not an engineer, so I did no field work. I didn't touch a pipe, and I probably wouldn't know what to do if I did. So, so to be honest, I didn't do anything around system or hydrological analysis. That's for your engineers, whether that's Cobb Finley or Kimley Horn. That one. So those folks will tell you what your system needs. That culminates into a capital plan, and what I have is your CIP. And that goes back to that second slide, I think, where we have the $50 million of need. I trust some of that's rehab. But I think a lot of that may be growth-related as well.
A lot of it's new, but I do know that they factor in our budget numbers and building and affiliation too, which does have repair costs. So there is some of that built in. I think Cobb Finley, the purpose of going to Cobb Finley instead of TRC was, I think, we're trying to model the system more appropriately so that way you can do more of that maintenance factor into it. So that CIP obviously is fluid right now, but not going to change.
The other thing I'll mention is you don't currently have a capital repair and replacement fund. And whether or not you dedicate a fund or by policy have something else, I can't recall if we talked about this in Stormwater, but I think it's very prudent to do so. And as you see, your days cash on hand builds because we're meeting a debt service coverage that makes us put more money into our revenue than we need year to year. That builds a cash balance. So if you find yourself in three years in a position of, we have a little more cash than we thought, you can set aside some for a rate stabilization fund, right? And say, if we ever need more than 6% from our ratepayers, we're going to hit this first. You can set some aside for ongoing capital repair and replacement. So you can try to have a pay-go program that would say, if we can sweep funds aside that we can then later use for capital maintenance, because we don't want to debt-finance capital repairs, then you could have that dollar set aside and prescribed as well. So, again, it's not so much money. Your total balance wouldn't cover your wastewater plant, right? So it's, it's a, it's a big number relative to your days cash or operating, but it's not going to solve all the CIP needs. You're not, you're not accumulating an enormous amount of cash that couldn't find a use within one year on a capital project. Is my point. Sorry, I couldn't answer that. Yes, I've checked it all, but I, I know we have.
I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the factoring.
Yeah, so we took the fiscal '25 budget, the '26 expected budget, and we've allowed for inflation on staffing. We didn't grow headcount. To my knowledge, I don't think we did. So we've held that constant. So we didn't add staffing, but we certainly put in sort of continuation plus inflation of the budget that will be proposed for 2026. All right, so again, all this works. These are the bill impacts. This is your typical residential user, 5,500 gallons of water and sewer, currently paying under $50 at 4930. Next year, with a 10% increase on wastewater, that's about half the bill, it makes a 5% increase. So less than $2.50 increase on a monthly bill for the resident. That number does grow. You'll see to 450, 555, up to 865 if we continue the plan and we need the wastewater rates to go up each year as proposed.
So this, just to make sure, so this does not include the fee that we have for the storm water?
No, sir. No, this is not a total bill. There's no solid waste factored in.
We'll still have that.
Yes, sir. This is just the water and wastewater components. Good question. Small business, similar, right? Because this is a 5/8 inch meter assumption. If it were a 2-inch, depending on whether or not you'll have a 2-inch small business account, if it were a larger meter, they'd pay more, but next year, they are treated pretty much just like a resident, with the exception of they won't have a winter average on their wastewater consumption. But assuming the total here, this is a lower average at 4,500, you'll see the impacts to small business. And then to a 2-inch meter, this is your most prevalent meter size for commercial. Most of my clients, this is the most prevalent meter size for commercial. So this is that impact to a typical 2-inch meter that has 75,000 gallons of water per month and 75,000 of sewer, currently paying a little under 900, moving up $60 to 959. So we always compare. I think I did this in drainage too, but more so in water, your system is not their system, right? They may have invested earlier or later, but you have a number. Alamo Heights, San Antonio, it's going to be hard to compare to. They have a whole plethora of rate design options to help different user groups there. And then effectively you'll see Terrell Hills topping the charts as your comparator set now. But right here in the middle, even with the increase in fiscal year 2026, you don't change in relative position from 43 to your next comparator at 61. I would say you have a lot of headroom if your relative position was something of concern because you're not even touching that next unit.
Now, the numbers you're using for the others, those are the ones that they're currently at. So if they're proposing, because I know one of them is proposing to go.
Absolutely, yes. I can only know what's on the record today. And if, as you get into the budget, if perhaps Zach has better information about what other city managers and admins are putting in front of their councils, you could have what they're looking at. But yes, sir, this is even today. So many of these will, I assume many of these will go up because the trend is water and wastewater is not getting any cheaper.
Even the proposed one, we're still going to be based on what I'm thinking the rates on some of these other folks. We're still going to be like $20, $20 to $30 less than.
Right. Right. It's a function of how much water is consumed as well. This is at 2,000 gallons. This is that lowest unit that we typically consider. Frankly, it's generally the widower that we're concerned about, how is their bill going to be affected that we often display. So that's what we're showing you here. We showed you 5,500 on the prior slide. So here is a commercial comparison. Again, similar positioning, top middle, moving up an iota. Again, not touching the next neighbor and they too will be looking at rate increases likely on commercial. There is not a specific small business comparator, by the way. You're not the only person in the world with it, but we didn't have a comparison because not all of them have a small business rate structure. So that's why I don't have that comparison for you. The next couple slides really start to dig into what could be conservation price signaling and your drought surcharges. So I'd like to go back a slide, I think, because I really don't want to cloud the primary rate discussion with this, it's kind of a sidebar. It's a different topic around your drought surcharges. But any other thoughts, comments on the proposed rate plan and certainly for fiscal '26?
What's the magic formula for Alamo Heights, San Antonio and Alamos?
Commercial is likely the answer. Alamos, I don't know. I don't know that community, so it could be.
Less commercial or?
What's that?
Less commercial, more residential?
More commercial, typically more private rate.
Of the overall rate, but if we're looking at the commercial comparison for the regionals.
Yeah, so again, I don't know the community of Alamos, but Alamo Heights and San Antonio, Castle Hills all have that outgrowth of San Antonio. So then that suburban, if you will, ring and they're going to have more commercial and commercial pays a higher total bill typically. I haven't compared each of them, but that would probably be the reasoning.
But some of these places, the ring is going to be the ring. They're not going to grow anymore.
It's tricky.
They're capped out.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, so when you look at some of these other communities, like even San Antonio, that's, you know, based on annexation that can grow, so some of them are pretty capped. So it's easier for them. Let me just put it that way.
That makes sense.
And if they're deferring maintenance and not reinvesting, I worked with the Central Texas community with like 900 people and they needed like $40 million for a plant because they just waited so long. They didn't do any maintenance and they just kept waiting, kept waiting, and then it hit them all at once. So the age of their infrastructure, their consumer patterns, this very affluent community will have a lot of people that irrigate a lot and they're happy to pay a $500 water bill in July. And we say thank you and we remind them to conserve, but thank you at the same time. And so there's a demographic difference, there's a usage pattern, and then I really do think commercial makes the biggest difference. And certainly if they have any industrial, I think the city may have an industrial customer or at least a large volume water user in the future, if not industrial. So if they've got 30 of those, that can tilt the scale their favor for the other rate payers. Any other questions on the base? And I can go back to the plan. I just don't want to get into drought surcharges before I kind of focus on the plan. This is the plan. So in '26, no change on the water for the resident. We do the meter equivalency at 20% and then we have 10% on all wastewater charges in 2026 for all customers.
Yeah, well, I know that, I mean, that's our biggest project. Everything else is already covered. The only thing that we have open right now is the expansion project.
I think the biggest, one of the things I conveyed to Matthew early on was, you know, we, a couple of years ago, we hit residents with a pretty big increase, I think, just because we were so far behind. And so I think in part of being able to keep rates generally the same for residential for a few years, I think helps out tremendously for our residents. So that was really, I think, a big factor and I was happy to see that when they obviously came back with this particular proposal on the residential side. And we do know that obviously commercial is impacting our system more, just naturally that happens. So I think moving in that direction is smart for our system and our utility as a whole. Obviously, it's a council decision, so.
And I think it's just discussion, so I wasn't looking for a vote. I just wanted to make sure I covered that.
Yeah, this is just discussion. We want to get some direction, making sure so he can finalize his numbers if we want to build in higher residential, you know, users as an impact, you know, so that they can build that in. I mean, that's the stuff we're looking for this evening so we can kind of come to some conclusions on some of this before we bring it for public hearing and all that.
Yeah, so with that in mind, if I go to the next slide, maybe we visit that, actually, two slides, where am I? Here we go. So we use commercial as a visual for the meter sizes. If I were to put in a larger meter premium on a residential customer, would you want it to be the same 20% equivalency factor? Or would you want it to be a lesser factor for residents?
One inch one?
Yes, sir. If they have what, again, that breakpoint's another important question. They have more than a three quarter, so a one inch, do we want to put in half of the commercial differential? Do we want to say 10% and we're going to cap it at 50% in five years when we're done with all this? And for illustration, let me go back to what 100% looks like on today's rates. You do have a two inch meter or two out there for residents. We pulled this card in other communities and we had people change their meter. I'm like, that's fine. If you don't need a two inch, don't have a two inch. So that's another potential on a few of these handful.
Well, that's the reason why the numbers, how they've broken down.
Yes, sir.
Not right now, but in a sense of. Yeah. I think that will help the conversation if we get that data, just having an idea because, you know.
Yeah, we're only affecting pre-customer.
Exactly, exactly. It's like, okay, how much are we going to be able to make a difference on what we actually have?
Yeah, I guess it's a dozen to two dozen at most residents that are one inch and higher. But if you have a large ranch or something else, you might have had a large line at the curb so you could feed a barn and feed some of the, so I don't know what you got out here, but that's.
Now, the size, the size is based on the size of the meter going into, right?
Yes, sir.
So as long as the meter stays the same, then it would be.
Yeah, it's not the, so the equivalency is based on the continuous sort of demand on that meter. And so as it steps up, you need about two thirds more instantaneous water for that one inch than you do a three quarter. And that's why it's a 1.67 factor. So if they don't change their meter or if their meter's not larger, it's not a function of how much water they use, it's a function of how much could they use at a given time.
Okay.
But go ahead and introduce at least for consideration, a change that would have a residential factor and then it can be considered. Is that some, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll do that on everything one inch and higher.
I think the biggest thing like you mentioned on there is just looking at our sewer. That's the big one in a sense of starting off. Since we're going to do it year by year, right? I mean, we're going to look at the next five years, but we're going to be doing the SNAP for 2026 based on what you're proposing. That's the one that we've got to pay a little bit closer attention, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think that's one, enough to take this as a little nap, but I think looking at it every year and then doing that five-year mark to bring out the actual consultant, you know, basically where we're at, but then with each year and then there are years, us doing that analysis.
Yeah.
From smaller to bigger.
Yeah, no, I fully support that. If your staff can handle it, we're happy to come alongside, give them some helpful hints of what we do. We can do that for sure.
But if the numbers change drastically.
Then he'll call. We'll look at it.
Hand to them the song.
Yeah. An upshot, though, I think you just handled some, a pretty large water leak, so that's a change in your favor. So congrats to you and SNAP for finding.
Yep.
So I do have a couple of other things. Were there any other rate design elements when Zach brings us back with budget you want to see for fiscal '26?
Anything?
Sort of hypothetical for me to throw at you. Okay. So with that, I did want to touch on this and Zach, tell me if I'm going too long or do you want to lead off the drought surcharge or you want me to just to start in?
No, I mean, obviously they, I asked them to look at, at Matthew's group to look at. So we're not being arbitrary in, you know, how we're charging drought surcharge. Remember we did a top, that language to be able to do that in stage four and five, but we never adopted the rate, obviously, to charge based on that. And then in talking with Matthew, I think there's some ways to even change that even a little bit more or figure that out, so.
Yeah, and just very quickly, what I have on screen is the residential sort of frequency distribution. This has sort of the users bend, the total bills per year. That bullet at the top is sort of predicated on the 5,000 gallon, which is your current threshold for the drought contingency surcharge, I believe, as, and so about 60% of your bills don't touch that anyways, right? And what I understand is you've been operating in stage four for some time and stage five came for a hot minute and it went away within days. And so a couple of things come to mind. One, ultimately, the council can advise Zach and team to go administer this or you can set more specific parameters. So do we ever touch stage five unless it's been in place for two weeks, right? If you think about on balance, your water bill comes in and if last month we touched stage five for five days, I don't think you want staff to have to figure out the usage for five days and prorate a bill. I'll go with that. I don't think you want your bill to reflect a stage five rate when it was five days. And so does it need to be two weeks or more at a stage five? And if it's more than half the bill, you're going to get the stage five surcharge. So there's some nuts and bolts policy practices to kind of put around that. But additionally, you may look at using the thresholds that are currently in place today. And so on screen, you have the 3,000 gallon, the 10,000 gallon and some others. What I've recommended to a lot of communities well before stage four is to start sending some price signals earlier. Now, I don't know if you can actually mitigate water consumption in Lidl. I have some communities where people don't listen and people use the water anyways, but a price signal can say a lot. And so if stage three, again, not that you can prevent stage four within Lidl, it may be a macro regional issue, but if you were in stage three, you could put, for instance, a premium on that top tier and don't touch any others, right? Stage two, rates are as they are. Stage three, we're going to add a premium to the top tier. Stage four, a premium on the top two tiers. Stage five, you better not water, right? And we're going to put a premium on a lot of them. So in practice, there are a lot of ways to do it. And I didn't come with you should do this recommended rate action. I just came to share, as we talked, that you have some options to employ. And I would always suggest you start turning on the heat before it gets real bad because if you wait till stage five to put on any pressure, you're going to be in stage five more than you want, maybe. And if it's not a regional stage five, it could be your own capacity limitations here in the city.
So is a surcharge a incentive to reduce or is it a penalty if you go over your average?
It is, in my perspective, a surcharge for a drought is a penalty for overage.
Overage, right?
It is a penalty for being a high discretionary water user. Because it is a drought time and we have limitations, right? Once a week watering, two hours, not between whatever, 10 and 7 p.m. or something. I think this is a stick. I think this is a, the carrot is all year long, you can enjoy better rates if you're, if you conserve and you don't go up the premium scale.
Exactly.
That's just normal, but that next marginal unit, even in good times, stage zero, right? We have all the water in the world. Well, pumping it to you still costs and we have so much capacity. So water's going to be scarce no matter how much water's on the ground, your system can only move so much. So that to say, I think the tiered approach makes sense and it's not a penalty in your normal rate setting, but I think anytime you bolt on a surcharge, it is certainly to discourage wasteful water use. And because it's not meant to just pay the bills, right? And we talked about that a little bit as well. So if we want to mitigate a revenue shortfall and we have a drought surcharge, we don't affect the volumetric rate, we put a surcharge on the minimums. And I had this, I think it was Burt Burnett. We needed more wells in Burt Burnett. They didn't have them yet and they had a surcharge on the bill. It was like $2.50 on all minimums until they had enough supply to meet everybody's normal demand, right? And so if it is for revenue sufficiency to make sure we can pay the bills, then it's not at all a stick. It's just a have to, right? It's just to make sure we make payroll. I don't think you're going to be in that position. You've been in stage four a long time, longer than I thought anybody could be in stage four, honestly. But yeah, so in my opinion, once you start putting in a surcharge, it is meant to enforce your regulation around water use. So effectively, it's a penalty for wasteful use.
So question for you. So you came up with a 5,000 gallons, is that not to exceed 5,000 gallons per month during a one period year?
Well, so the 5,000 here, truthfully, is just the council's current draft or current policy on a stage four, stage five. Across the board, okay.
Going to the stage, so you adopted 5,000 gallons, would not exceed, and that's each bill period.
So month?
Yeah, that's month to month.
Monthly, okay. So that's more monthly.
A year period where you exceed 5,000, a surcharge could be.
That's how I thought.
Is what we adopted. I think when Matthew, in looking at it, since we already have these built-in tiers, he's saying, don't necessarily have the 5,000 gallons anymore, just go back to your tiers where you're saying, we're only going to affect tiers one and two at stage three. At stage four, you're getting tier three and then stage five, you're getting all the tiers. Doesn't matter where you're at, you're getting a surcharge. So that was kind of the suggestion that we had kind of talked about. So basically getting rid of the 5,000 gallon and just going to matching up to the tiers that already exist that are succeeding.
And while 5,000 makes sense on a resident, your 10,000 on a commercial is, it's a lot harder road to toe, right? Because some need 80,000 gallons to do business.
Yeah.
So surcharge may be one, I've got to do the cleaning or bottle the water or whatever it is in process that they need that water for. And so emulating your tiered approach might be more consistent with what they're used to. And then setting a different bar for residents, and I know I've just put this out in the Central Texas community, we put a fifth tier, we just added on a fifth tier. From the third tier to the fourth tier is already 100% more, it's double the rate, we're talking $14 per 1,000 gallons. And because they had some people still going over 50,000, they said, put on another one, charge them more. And this is on the normal rate schedule, right? So we put the stick into normal rates because we just had a lot of people that were not bad actors, but they liked water. So that said, when you employ this, and that's what I asked Zach, I said, great, y'all have this policy, how do you enact it now? Because you live in stage four. So should the surcharge be, and that was my question, is the surcharge now a part of the normal rate? How much is it? And there's some, I think there are some things to flesh out. it? And there's some, I think there are some things to flesh out. So, I don't, I don't assume you have all those answers. But when you put them into place, they will affect your revenue, and that could also affect the rate plan, depending on if everyone observes and uses less water, maybe less revenue even with the surcharge. So, we just bring it up here to kind of broach the topic. I've done it in a few communities, and Zach thought it was important. I know that you have this in play, but since, since the surcharge isn't really defined as an amount yet, and we don't know when to employ it and how to put it on a bill yet, I just thought I'd bring up the topic.
And council, just to, just to be able to go back, the reason that we, we put some of this is because we're actually given, the stages then started restricting us how much we're supposed to be pumping, right? So, that's how we have to be able to show that, hey, we're, we're being a little bit more conservative in a sense of we're doing it, so.
So, I don't need any guidance. I really just added this to the presentation, so that I could be here to answer questions, to, probably talked too long about it already, but happy to field any questions you may have.
Just thinking out loud, and I don't know how, how this could be implemented, but I like the CPS bill, where they send you out, you're in the top 20% of usage in your neighborhood, you know, something like that, that gets the residents to say, whoa, I'm using a lot of electricity. Same, same thing could be on the water. If, if we start getting into a drought state, you know, drought state, and I'm one of the top users in the residential, I need to rethink of what I do. And that would be a good campaign to, to run.
Well, and I know, I, I believe, long-term, with us switching out the manual meters to the, to the, to the AMI, and if, if, I don't know who was on council at that time, like, there was the idea that there would be a customer portal side eventually, once we got more of these switched out, where we could have the antennas where it'd be easier to read. They could literally go on, they could set alerts to, hey, I'm going over, and they can see some of that kind of stuff, that gives them markers of where I'm at relative to my neighbors, you know? So, that's all built in, but obviously, that was kind of pushed until we get more of the years replaced, so.
Yeah, like I said, that was just food for thought. That, that would be a good way of showing the users, you know, hey, you're, you're in your top, top percent of your usage for your area, or as a resident.
Well, you see, one resident pumping, or, you know, we have.
Yeah, a very.
30-plus, so, pretty high, you know, and so, that's.
So, based on, I mean, just looking at this, I mean, our residents are doing good. I mean.
Yeah, you have pretty relatively low usage on average.
They're doing good?
It's the speed that we're doing. I'm ignoring that.
So, yeah.
Brown's the new green.
No, but it's, it's good. It's a way to be able to measure, so.
I mean, if I, for my, my suggestion would be, let's change the ordinance language to match up to the tiers, and determine which tiers we want to be affected in which stage.
Yeah.
And that would be my suggestion, you know, to council. And so, if that's the direction that council wants to see, then I'm happy to start bringing that ordinance language back for y'all to look at.
Yeah, because.
And then we determine the number, the actual dollar amount we charge.
Yeah.
I would definitely recommend an easy number, so it's easy for your building office, for you to explain. So, instead of a dollar 10, because it's scientifically the right number, a dollar is the premium on some stage tier, right? But because it's not set specifically to recover a needed missing revenue, there's not a right answer to that. It's then pretty much a council, I guess, recommendation, as to what price premium would be effective. All right, so I show this for commercial as well. Again, not to, what I don't know is all your commercial users, right? But I do think a single 10,000 may not be the silver bullet. And so, maybe if you follow the tiered approach there, and maybe the threshold's even higher for commercial users, maybe you reserve that 10,000, or even the 5,000 for the small business class that you have. If you haven't already envisioned that class being affected differently, so I'm not sure if there's a small business component in the drought contingency, but if you rewrite it, you may envision that user group differently than your big commercial. So, those are some thoughts. Future considerations, real quick. Other things that you can do, I'd recommend you do, do, is remove and reduce the included volumes in the minimum bill. So, the meaty part of the bone is where everyone's using water, right? And everyone's using, most everyone, right? You see, 86% are using more than 1,000, and then 76% are using 2,000 and 3,000. The fact that all the volumes up to 3,000 are included in the minimum doesn't do much to send a price signal, but it also is missing revenue, effectively. So, your wastewater side, you're charging 66 cents, or 60 cents for the first 3,000. So, I'm not saying they need to pay $8 per 1,000, but maybe you move into charging for that tier to enhance your revenue potential from even the folks using less water. Another, evaluate the potential to reduce the number of tiers. This is something I think Lynette probably was in favor of more than most on staff, but it could also fall on your utility billing folks. You have a lot of them. The reason to reduce tiers is to make it easier for residents to understand. And so, you wouldn't have to have your commercial structure equal to your residential structure. Again, this doesn't do a lot, it's not a, it doesn't fix anything. But when we talk about user rates, sometimes user understanding, or the ability to explain it, could be simplified and still generate the same revenue. That's really a nominal, but it's a note. The other is currently you charge a differential. It's $8.50 more on the minimum or base charge on water. On wastewater, you don't charge commercial a premium more than a resident. So, very quickly, if you were to mirror that, you'd have 8.50 per commercial connection. And so, it's not uncommon to see commercial pay more than residents. It's even true here already on water. So, the city council could consider charging more on the base charge for wastewater to commercial. Again, these are tools to employ in future years, instead of getting up to 18% on the wastewater bill in 2030. You can restructure, restructure the residential wastewater charges. Again, an inclining block rate is usually set, again, by the textbook that, that our industry uses, is to talk about peak demands on a water system. There's nothing dictating you can't put that on wastewater, but you're actually talking about total flow at a plant, a wastewater plant, not necessarily the peak flow from the users, because they're generally sending the waste in a constant stream. Your peaking at the plant is probably an INI or rain event, more than anything else. And so, the, the nexus between additional volumes and flow is not the same per k-gal on wastewater as it would be on water. So, again, another tool, and you can stop charging 60 cents per 1,000 gallon, and charge everyone some rate that's more consistent with, our industry norm is five-ish right now. We're not seeing a lot of wastewater rates less than $5 per 1,000 gallons, because it costs a lot to treat, and it's pretty expensive when we need a new plant. Lastly, implementation of these drought stage surcharges that will produce some additional revenue, if the intent is to not make it a revenue source you rely on to pay the bills, if we want to employ it as a stick, and we want to say, anybody that's in that group is going to have their dollars moved somewhere else, then all your surcharge revenue could go to pay the O and M, if you're short, or capital. So, those are my last kind of ramblings around rate considerations. These are things that you could consider in the future. I think all of them could help mitigate the percentage increases that residents may see in 2030 for all of this debt that we're bringing on. So, with that, I do say thank you. Still here to answer any questions you may have, and I can still take additional guidance from Zach. If, and I, if I don't get it here, and you have some insight, you can relate to me later, I'll be glad to do that, too.
I think because it's already come, it's already come in front of council, before, I think, the, the, my goodness, let me go back, the drought stage rate, I think we might as well go ahead and include it as discussion, even though it's for future considerations. I think we, we've already started talking about it, started doing that. We might as well implement it along with the other recommendations that were, that were brought forward.
And that's honestly, even if it's in the next couple of weeks, whereas we continue to go through the month, it turns out to be a great impact on some of the, that's, that's the direction that I'm looking for, if we're going to have that before we go into this year, and go ahead to the next year's.
What do you think, council? Go ahead and start working on that one. We already started on the ordinance with that. Yeah, so we might as well include that one. Okay. All right, well, thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Good info. Good info. You see, we're not that mad about you. You know, everything's good. We're all good. It's all good. All right, Zach. We're going to go ahead and move on to number five, and this is a presentation discussion and direction concerning budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and the council priorities.
All right, so, I'm going to let individual departments come up from the general fund, and go ahead and go through their different ones. I, in the packet, I arrange them according to how the order will go over them. The, I will just throw a general statement that obviously, we're still working through some of the revenues and the expenses, and even kind of aligning those appropriately in some of these. So, this is just the, really, the initial requests, kind of by the individual departments, and where they think the, really, the expenses is where they're, they're tasked with kind of looking at, where they expect to, to want to go. But even from the version that was included in the, or in the packet, has changed, as of today, with Yvonne and I working through stuff. So, it's very fluid. It's very fluid. So, I just want to throw that out there. Once the individual departments, and I'll wrap up the, kind of the admin side, and all the other departments that kind of fall under myself, and then we'll go to the priorities and talk about healthcare as well, which was also included, so.
So, Zach, is it safe to assume that the reason we don't have public works here is because we're still working on what we just finished talking about, right?
Yeah, so, we're, we're just focused on general funds. It's easier to split those individual departments, and then worry about utilities, especially with, in light of everything going on here, with the rate study, and then much more fluid.
That, that all ties into that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Thank you, sir.
You don't need to stick around.
You're good, you're good. We appreciate it.
So, we'll start off with animal control.
All right.
And, yeah, come on up. Obviously, Melinda's first time doing this with y'all, so have some patience, please.
Sounds good.
Go through the expenses, and where you wanted to, to add, or subtract, and why is really what they were looking for on your expenses. I'll help you out.
Sound good?
I'll help you out. Okay, so, on animal control, and what I will say is, on, on all of these, the salaries and wages, right now, is just built in the 3%. We have looked at the five, up to the 5%, like we discussed. We'll present that at a different time, but just so y'all, what y'all know, y'all are looking at is the, is on the 3%. I would say, obviously, that changes the normal overtime, social security, that kind of sort of fringe benefits, all that accordingly. Really, Melinda, the only change she had was adding $1,000 in office technology. There is a computer that needs to be replaced in the main office section. It's pretty, pretty bad off. And so, that was really the impetus behind that. We did decrease 1,000 in repairs and maintenance of the vehicle, and we increased utilities a little bit, just general stuff like that, and took out about $500 out of seminars and travel and training as well. So, everything else stayed the same. So, very, very similar stuff, but obviously, Melinda, about what we have going on over there.
You decreased maintenance on vehicles because there are new vehicles?
Why, why did it decrease?
Yeah, on the vehicle maintenance.
Was to add to the technology?
Okay, so she's just trying to take away from that to add.
Okay, but you, you do have mostly new vehicles out there, right?
We have the, yeah, the Ford.
Right, and it's still under warranty, except for like tires and oil changes, right?
They do have, they have the old van, you know?
Yes.
But I think you guys just recently did some work on it, probably within the last year, right?
Daniel, some work done in the last year on that, before you left.
So, some of the items we talked about last year, you probably know more. Have they been addressed, for example, the AC, the exhaust fans, the awnings, I believe? Has all that been addressed, or is this going to be included in this year's budget?
Yeah, so I'll let, I know the, the, the exhaust fans have all been installed, so that was all taken care of under the current budget. The, some of the eaves have been, you know, contractor has, I think, come out and looked at it, and I'm not sure about replaced or not yet, for like the, the exterior.
The canopy, or the?
Yeah. Like the.
Yeah, see, we, we discussed this last year, and I know a lot of it's going to be new to you.
So, I think the biggest one that still has not been addressed is the, the doors, the replacing of the.
The roll-up doors.
The garage doors. So, that was the big thing. So, that would still need to be tackled under this particular.
Is it in here?
We can fix that. We fixed that when he was there, the roll-out doors. It was always intended, but it never got.
Yeah, it never happened.
No, it's never been done. Mostly, we attempted to fix. That would be included in the 5,000 for the capital improvements to the AC facility, so.
That would be included to go ahead and take care of the, of the doors?
Yes.
Okay. I know, I'm trying to remember.
I want to say, I'm going to say he had fixed those. The only thing we were still waiting on was the awning on the outside, and it was falling apart.
Right.
Other than that, everything else, the pillars and the.
That, that's, that's fixed.
The pillars been taken.
Yeah, those are fixed.
But I want to say the doors, he had taken, they had got fixed.
Okay. I will make a note. Sounds like no, but I'll make it.
Now, we did, we did take care of the AC, right?
Yes, the AC's been fixed.
The AC, I think it was. And that was a big one. That was a big one.
The front canopy's also fixed.
Yep.
Yeah, this was the garage doors.
Okay. I just can't remember that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will, I made a note, so Yvonne and I will see if we can find.
You guys.
And I may never, you know, maybe I could have been, and yeah.
You're still looking at that extra container, going back to the other, the other facility, right?
Yeah, so, I do, like, I want to note on, let's see, where is it at? I think the high, the fiscal activity that you're seeing in repairs and maintenance, which is like 14,000, is where I think the staff have been plugging that particular extra structure. So, that's why there's such a high amount there under the current fiscal activities. So, that would be going away. So, that's why we're knocking it back down to the 4,000 finish, or keeping it the same, because that was not intended to be there, so. It was only because of the pests that were trying to issue.
Okay.
What I'd like to see, if we can, like, we'll go back to salaries and wages, and then goes for every department of where they're at, for example, where the directors at, where we have employees at, and then see, you know, what the actual 2% tax, on top of their salary.
Yeah.
And if that's something that we can get, you know.
So, this that you gave us right now, this is at 3% already?
This is 3%, for the most part. Yvonne and I've made a few changes, where, like, the overall compensation, which was that Christmas pay that we always give, has always been factored in salaries. So, we kind of removed that, put that into the salary line item. So, there's some changes, but generally, yes, this is the 3% for the most part.
In terms of what Matthew had said, that, you know, I'm good with this 3%, and if needed, merit increases. I mean, we have to look at the overall picture, not just across the board, everybody gets, you know, this flat number.
Yeah, we've got to see where merit exists, and maybe somebody's doing the 5, somebody's doing the 3.
That's why, again, I think for the budget, it's good to do it at 3%.
I'm with you, but I think we need to check with legal, because we are restricted on, on performance.
Right.
We got to.
No, the merit would obviously have to do with performance.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
We need to stay away from just, you're, you've been here five years.
No, I'm with you, I'm with you. But we got to be very careful about, hey, this person is, and they have done a great job, and we're going to go ahead and give them a higher based on the performance. I think there's a little sticky portion about that. I would say, we need to talk to legal, and kind of get an idea of how we actually do that.
What we can do, we bonded up a spreadsheet, literally 2% all the way up to 5%, so with everybody's salary, what that looks like, across the board, all the, all the fringe benefits, retirement, all that kind of stuff. So, we can provide that to y'all at a, at another meeting to show all that. And then, that'll give you the, across the board, and then we can have that additional conversation with the attorney to figure out.
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure. I'm with you, but we just need to make sure, in a sense, there are some stipulations of what we can do with that, so. Anything else? All right. You see, it wasn't too bad. Too bad. Okay, next year, you, the next one, you come by yourself. All right.
It's not a problem.
All right.
All right, next we got library.
Library.
She has to do it by herself, she's got her.
All right, Cassandra.
So, we wanted to increase summer reading program by about $300. Right now, we're at 2,200. We wanted to go to 2,500, because we're trying to offer more stuff, and some, some of the stuff has gone up in price, like some of the program, bringing out those, those people that do that foam, they went up in price, so we'd like to try more over money there. And then, I think, I think the only other increase was going to be like the dues and association, because we're at 1,000, and make it just to 2,000. And.
A little bit on the repairs, maintenance, about 1,000?
That one's 5,000.
I think you proposed a six, so it's.
Oh, okay, I had said six on that one, I forgot about that, yes. And then, the dues and association, instead of going. And then the dues and association, instead of going all the way to 35, we only actually need 2,000, so.
2,000, 25, what else is it?
Oh, 25, okay, that would work too, because I was going to include April from the TLA, not the conference, but just for the membership. And I think that was it, because we were working on trying to get the lights repaired in the library.
Any help?
Some of them are working off of ballast, because the building is, some of the parts of the building are built in 74, and then in 89, and then 2008, so it's just...
Now, if you are, same magnets go over there, do stuff.
They'll, they'll repair the, the light, like, if the light's out, then they'll come and change it out, kind of, but like...
Go ahead, work order.
Yes, but...
So mainly on this particular, on the light situation over there, we do have a contractor that's already made the purchase for the lights, and some additional ballast, just because it's a larger scale, there's some issues with the lights over there, so that's already been purchased as part of this budget.
It's going to be taken care of.
We plan to take care of that, so, but we've had some AC issues recently, just little things here and there, so that's why we just wanted to add a little bit of extra pushing there, so.
And the issue we had to manage with that fixed rating was upgrading the security system.
That's what I'm working on.
It's still in the...
Yeah.
It's still on our list, but that would be something that we can definitely, it's the time right now to, can't fit that in.
Yeah, I was looking at some options to see what we can do with that, so.
I had, so they had done changes to the security system out at animal control, and I asked Daniel to get with Cassandra, but obviously everyone with Daniel haven't, and so that didn't happen. Obviously, we're looking at the section that's there.
The lights you're talking about, the ceiling-like fluorescent lights?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of surprised we're still using fluorescent.
We transitioned the entire community center, the entire police department, we transitioned the LED ballast out.
Because LED actually uses less than the fluorescent bulb, yes, so...
Well, it's fine.
There's, there's a trade-off in replacing the lights and reduce electric bill.
I think that's what they've been doing, they've been replacing them as they needed, so it works out good.
Yeah, I heard them talking about, you have a contract to have a guy come in and get ballast from.
Yeah, so it's mostly to change out to LED, there's a couple situations where your ballast, they can't, just because of the way you take it.
I understand.
But most of them, you can change at this point to LED.
Say, 25 bucks, you can get a LED set, and it's less than the cost of the ballast.
Right.
Get the whole system.
But that'll be taken care of current budget.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to do, because the corner of the library, like, in the back section where the 2008 part was built, it's very dark back there, and we have, like, you know, the nonfiction section, it's also paperback and Christian fiction, so it's like, I don't want him to have to come in with, you know, flashlights trying to see what he...
Well, nonfiction, dark, that goes good.
That'd be nice, right?
Yeah, no, nonfiction, right? Just say, I remember our nonfiction in our library was down in the bottom, it was, yes, everybody's like, I don't know, why would I go down there? That was a nonfiction.
Yeah.
It's good.
So this question's going to affect all departments, but because I asked previously on the new computers that have come in, are we all Windows 11, or we still have?
There's all Windows 11, except for two computers.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to see if they can upgrade those two, but all, everything is Windows 11.
Okay, because if, if it's not, let's say the department still has outdated, or not outdated, but non-Windows 11, then they should be included in the, like, cyber arc and whatever, security, right? Okay.
Some of the staff computers are still on, on 10, but for the most part...
But you have plans on getting those two?
Yes.
Okay.
Construction on the outside, it's all been completed, they're still working on.
What, the...
Sidewalks and roofs.
No, that's a sidewalk project.
Yeah, they're still working on it.
Should be the end of this month, that's what we were told.
Most...
Thank you, Cassandra. Appreciate it.
One, one thing there, PD Leo's allocation has 45,300, I think that's a typo, I guess. That's a typo, they just added an extra digit to that, so.
Where is that?
That's money we, at the very top, yeah, the revenue part, that's what, that's money we get from the comptroller's office for training, we're getting right now, it depends on how much they give you, and it's around, it's around, let me see, about 24, 2500.
That was 23, 24.
Yeah, it should have been about 24, 2500, not 45,000.
Those move, those money moving, being moved around, you know, during that training.
There you go.
Is that for the whole department or for officer?
So that, the state, we have our own training budget, and then the comptroller's office collects money off some sort of tax they collect, about legislates to require them to send a portion of that back, so for departmental, and it varies, it's based on number of full-time employees, so we're at 12 full-time employees, when we filled it out, we're probably at 10, because it has to be, it can't be like if you got vacancies, it's how many you actually have when you sign the paper. So, you know, I think this year, they gave an extra payment, so I think we got around 2,400 this year. Now, about seven, 10 years ago, they did away with it one budget cycle, so you didn't get anything for two or three years, but they, I think now it's pretty much going to push. So that's, but that, that was just a typo there. We're over in some line items with, and, and most of them, the reason is, with the exception of the vehicles, but I'll talk about the vehicles, but we added a 12th officer, so that was not budgeted this year. So what we did was, we figured the process, I think Matt, I watched the tape, Matco Council was paying $8,000 additionally to outfit that person with equipment. Well, we ended up getting some seizure money, so we were offset that, but it pushed a few things over, because when you hire a new person, besides just the equipment, we have to pay another license for body cam, we have to pay another license for their reporting system, and there's a startup fee on that, that's about 1,500 or something for the startup fee. We have to pay another license for the ticket writing system, those three, of course, there's another email address and whatever goes with that, you know, so what is there something else we can think of? That's just the stuff you pay just to have the position, you know. So, and then the other stuff was the equipment, we, we were able to buy some of that uniforms, taser, we bought that out of that seizure money. So that's why a few of these things like that are, are over. Let me look here, what really is something we, of course, you know, with that cellphone went up, because we get small cell phone allowance, and you get a uniform allowance, so neither of that was factored in this budget, so that also for that new officer that came on in March, it was not budgeted, those are also going to be pushed out into the budget. But again, in general, it's a pretty small amount. Postage is one thing that we, we went down a little bit, we're over a little bit right now, I believe, but we are no longer going to be able to mail stuff to the lab, which we normally mail stuff to the lab in Austin about two or three times a week. We are now going to have to physically drive it to Austin, and we're going to have to have an appointment. So we are going to be going to Austin, and, and we've got a lot, guys do a lot of DWIs, so we've got blood, we're not going to be able to keep all that stuff, so we are going to be, so if y'all need something along the way, you know, call us, because we are going to be probably going to Austin.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, does it have to be in law enforcement?
Yeah, that's the problem, they, they want that chain of custody, so they're not even doing a drop box, we've got to basically make an appointment with them to drop off the stuff. So it's going to be a real, yes, everywhere in Texas, they are not, you can take it to the nearest lab, but there is no lab in San Antonio. Our closest labs are Corpus and Austin, and they're both within about 15 minutes, depending on...
Rather than Corpus.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we got to look at, you know. Sir?
Traffic center, Corpus.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, once, we got to start doing that, we have to, we have to start, yeah, well, that'd be one, yeah.
With the restaurant and the store, the murder.
That's exactly right, that's what I was thinking, you know, there's complete supply of Cabela's up there. But, so that's something that's going to affect us, you know, I mean, we're going to lose a lot of man-hours, you know, traveling to, to Austin, so I don't know how smaller departments, they only have two or three people, I mean, you know, but they're probably not making the arrests that we're making, so, yeah, it's, that starts, it's mandatory September 1st, but they'll start letting you do it if you want to, July 1st. So our postage is going to go down, but the time spent doing that is going to be a real pain.
So is that additional cost going to be reflected in the fee for penalties? Or that ticket?
No, none of that, none of that, that is all, that is all, that is all some, well, it is, but it doesn't come to us, all that goes to the county court and the district court, so we won't, we, we don't get, we don't get any, we don't get any fees from that, we don't get any of that.
Do you have that overtime, or how to bring the officer in?
No, I mean, we're, we're hoping we have enough staff right now, and if we were about eight or nine officers, it, yeah, it could be, you're talking about paying somebody overtime to drive to Cabela's, you know, you know, Sixth Street or something, but, but we're not, but we've got enough officers now where we can absorb it, and, you know, like Danny or somebody, you know, we'll just have to make our trip, and I'm thinking you'll go up there and pick up stuff, you know, maybe drop, you'll have to get appointments, hopefully you can get, you know, and then you have to watch traffic, and then you're going to have to, you know, maybe at the same time, you stop back by Sam's.
Is there a window of being able to drop it off when you collect anything like that? It has to be...
Well, what scares us is...
Because you're saying appointments, but...
The blood is the issue, yeah, the blood is the issue, you know, we used to, they used to want us to refrigerate blood, right now, we're doing, what, a couple DWIs a week, sometimes with blood, if not more. So I mean, the blood, that's going to be the issue, the drugs, but the problem is prosecutor's going to tell you, we need it to the lab as soon as possible, because we're not moving on the case until you get it to the, to the lab, results come in. So it's all, I mean, nothing's going to happen until the lab gets it and gets it back, so the more you hold it, but again, this is statewide, it's nothing, it's, it's because, you know, well, it wasn't because nothing, we did, obviously, I mean, it's just, there was enough problem with the way stuff was being packaged, you know, sending in things, so.
San Antonio's not...
No, they don't have a DPS lab, now they have a private lab, so, I mean, you, you could, you, yeah, that's, I think that's going to be the issue, I mean, I think, because some of those labs, I want to say they were charging, you know, 300, 400 bucks for a test on meth, and you might have somebody you arrest, they got, this guy's got meth on him, this guy's got meth on him, they're separate, and then they got some, some other, they got something else, you don't know what it is, so, yeah, I think...
I think they have one in San Antonio, all of them.
No, but San Antonio uses the police office.
Yeah, they have there.
And we would, the current way we do it is the state does it, and the bill goes directly to the prosecutor for restitution, we don't pay anything. If we go any other way, the city will have to pay for it, we'll have to wait for the restitution.
And which you probably never get.
And they don't love we argue, like, the best case scenario, maybe it could be four.
Yeah, dollar a week rest, so that's just something we're dealing with, and it, you know, it's not anything, we're, it's just everybody's going to be, but, but what's issue is these departments that are not, that are two, two hours from a lab. I mean, it's, you're going to end up having some places, they might wait a week and make it an overnight trip to go to the lab, there's a DPS lab in Lobo, there's one in Midland, there's one in El Paso, I mean, you can look on it, they got...
And do you wait for the certain time of the week to see where they involved and go at one time?
Well, we, we don't know, right now, we mail them, we mail stuff, so, yeah, right now, we get, we get, we get it processed, we get it out, we get it out the door, and when we get the lab results back, we get them to the prosecutor, and they can go on with the case, because otherwise, if you don't send them, it's, it's, you know, basically you're, I mean, the longer you take to get the lab results back, the worst chance, the, you know, it's just like everything else, the older it's case is, when they get behind, it's easier to just start dropping cases. So it's new, we don't know, I don't, it's just paid it being, it's, it's just going to be the new normal, like a lot of stuff that I've seen the last 25 years, you know, I never thought that you'd have, you know, when I started, you didn't come in and check emails, we didn't have email, you didn't, there weren't any videos to download, you know, about the only place in town had a video was the bank, you know, and, and so, you know, it's just a lot different. So, anyway, we did break out ammunition and taser cartridges into a separate line item, and we basically took that out of the PD supply line item, which I think last year was somehow got tagged office supplies, but it's actually everything from office supplies to all the different stuff we use. Office supplies to me was more like, you know, staples and paper, and, you know, we don't, you know, it was a lot of stuff, you know, that we use. What, what actually, some of the things went up just because they, they went up, you know, just as they do every year.
Did you talk about the PD vehicles?
The which one, sir?
PD vehicles and accessories, that's right.
That, that I'm going to, that I'll go to, that's probably the only big thing we've got, but I was going to, there was something else, I was, oh, online investigation services, we've been paying for leads online, and this year, we're adding a, Matt, remind me the name.
Company on the first two.
First two, we, so much of what we do now is researching stuff online and tracking people down, and this is a, an open source, it's very popular with law enforcement, and you know, right now, we're getting by with calling people we know that have license to it, and, but you know, I mean, it's, but we need to, we need to get our own license, I mean, we shouldn't be bought, these other people that work, these other agencies, they're nice, they're glad to help us, but you know, at some point in time, they're like, hey, chief, why don't I buy your own, you know, I mean, I got, I got things to do. So that's basically that. Other than that, everything is pretty much normal, with the exception, I'll go back to vehicles before I forget, building repairs and maintenance, we have at 4,000, we've got some leaks, we got some fixed, but now we have new ones. So we need to get the roof coated, we've made some calls, we're not getting much traction on, you know, I forgot how hard it was to get vendors, you know, for that type of stuff right now, where I'm getting some calls back, Matt, have you called or David, and Danny, and we'll start again, I'll have Matt, we're going to start again tomorrow, we'll try to get, we need to get, we need to probably get it coated, the roof coat's 10 years old, you know, we just need to get it coated with something that'll...
For the building?
For the police building, so that's it.
10 years, right?
Yeah, that's hard to believe, so, hard to believe. So really, nothing in there, and Zach, can you remind, if there's some matters or something in there that really, it's all pretty much basic stuff, we didn't really have any real adjustments other than that.
Any of those in there, still an open item with any grants? Anything in there, and we're waiting?
No, the grant stuff...
I will just say, like, the miscellaneous equipment, where you see, like, the 28,000, which is overstated, like, that is the radio grant purchases, but we haven't received the money back yet, so that's where some of those current physical activity listings seem a little high.
Is it just radios that are still tentative out there?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's...
We've, well, we've put in the invoices, everything, we're just waiting on...
Yeah, but so when the city got, when we got the invoices in, at the time, you know, Lynette was still here, we really, so we just figured, okay, let's, it was decided, we'll put them in miscellaneous equipment, because we have to put it somewhere and, you know, make, to show up, well, then when we did that, it, you know, made it look like you're over $25,000, which not, we're actually over, I think, about $20, but...
And then the, the only other, obviously continual one would be the cop's gram, where we can reimburse that on the officer.
So the vehicles is the big key, you know, we've got six vehicles, one of them, the charger, well, we're, wait, okay, we're over on vehicle maintenance, we had to put a motor in the charger, we also, the Tahos are much more lighter, I mean, maintenance, I will never buy another Tahoe, everything on them, brakes are terrible, I mean, brakes are terrible, which, and you can go online and just Google problems, I mean, brakes, they use, the tires are expensive, we use a lot of tires, they're just, they're, they're good vehicles, but they're, they're not, they're not cheap to operate, they're not good for us, I mean, so, that's, we, we lowered the budget last year, thinking we were going to, you know, have a little bit of newer vehicles, and then we end up with, you know, trouble with the Tahos, and then, and we did a lot of warranty work, too. They did probably, they put a new motor in, one under warranty, and there's another one, may end up getting another motor out of warranty, but there's everything else, I mean, so that tells you there's a problem, you know, but, so we're hoping that, you know, anyway, we're going to get rid of the, right now, the charger, as we just looked online, has 110,000 on it, and we normally try to get rid of stuff before that, but we And we normally try to get rid of stuff before that, but we don't, we can't, we own six cars, we can't afford to, we have 12 officers. So the norm, what's the norm, you know, in a town our size? If you go to Hondo, Pleasanton, Divine, Casterville, they're one car per officer. And they're all take home. So we don't have that, we never have, I mean, but, and, and we're not going to get that, you know, but we, we're just short on vehicles compared to most, like the Atascos County, Medina County, all of, every officer has their own vehicle. Now, I don't need, everybody's going to need their own vehicle, but we got to get closer than where we are. Because we're having right now, one vehicle's in the shop. And one vehicle's, you know, got the radio not within hours, you just barely got enough to patrol in, you know? So we're having to, you know, take a trip, you know, use our personal vehicle maybe to make a, go somewhere as opposed to, you know? And we need to get a vehicle that, uh, we need, we need a administrative, we need kind of an unmarked vehicle, a little, uh, what you call a little more, um, covert type vehicle that would still be a police vehicle, but a little. When we're doing investigations in San Antonio, you know, if you've got a cousin that lives at apartments over there on the northeast side and, you know, you know that he's out here. Oh, I thought it'd be good, cause I know you, I don't want to offend nobody else. Yeah, so, yeah, so you know, when they, when you're over there, when we're in San Antonio and my guys are tracking people down and they're on the northeast side in their apartment complex and a marked lot of vehicles, somebody, hey, they'll, they know you, they know, they're looking for you. Cause your, your cousin lives in Littler and you're out there selling dope or whatever the case may be. So we got to get a little something there to help us out with a little more covertness. But, uh, we had an old car at a time and then we gave it to animal control because they needed it. And then we got it back and smelled like dogs and we sold it at auction. Nothing personal, much true. Um, so what we looked at is if we bought three vehicles, if we bought three police vehicles, we'd have to get rid of the Charger, please. I mean, that would be my, that car is not designed, we bought that thinking, you know, it's a car, it was a little cheaper, it'd be a bad decision, should have got a pickup or something, it's too low. Maintenance on it's been terrible. Well, you know, we're going to look, we're looking at everything from a pickup to maybe, uh, Durango, which are like the SRO that the school has. We're looking at, I mean, Equinox, a Traverse, I mean, we, we've talked to people using all different kind of vehicles. The best, some of the best vehicles we've ever had here in the last 25 years that lasted was the two Dodge pickups that were not police models. And then when we sold them, we got some, we got a lot of the money back. And the Ford Expedition that we had, it was not a police package. Those vehicles have held up better than the others. That's just right, Matt, I mean, I mean, it's just weird, but true. So we're not, really what we're doing right now is we're looking to try to get some money to get three vehicles. And then, you know, that's actually kind of a, you know, a top number, which we're, we're, you know, we're going to piece, we've tried a lot of different things with these, you know? Uh, last time we went to a turnkey vendor because, you know, they, oh, that's what you do, you know? Well, here's a problem, we know police vehicles, we know where to get the equipment. Normally what, what we'll do is we'll do, we'll buy the vehicles, we'll get an upfitter and we'll order the equipment. And I won't buy it from one person because they'll give you a good deal on the light bar and they'll charge you twice as much for the installation parts or something. So we'll get on there and we'll search the internet and we'll buy from three or four vendors, we'll get the best price on everything. And when we do that, we can actually pinpoint and bring our price down quite a bit, uh, right, that's what we kind of figured, Matt? That's what we've done.
Yeah, we got to be careful because prices, now that everybody's online, they can see each other's prices.
Yeah, but you got to get, you, you shop around. Yeah, I mean, we're going to piece it out to get the best equipment we can on there. You know, what we did last time through the cat fleet was a disaster, you know? It took us forever. Matt went and picked up a vehicle, it had zero gas in it, he got a half a mile down the road and was out of gas. I mean, you know, we couldn't get him to return calls, it was, they wanted to recharge, charge us to program the thing after we paid, you know, $80,000. They want to charge us to program the, the light bar, you know? I mean, it, it, it was very, it was just a bad process.
You have four that are kind of, the Tahos, right?
Well, and I say they're kind of new, Matt, what are the, what is like number five?
It's close to eightish?
Three was number five, number, we have some, we have two 22s and two 23s. My pickup is a. Yeah, my pickup is a 20, um, 17 that I drive a lot. So we have a 2017, we have a 2019 Charger, we have two 22s and two 23s. But the 22s, one. One of the 22s that David drives has 48,000.
It's a total of six vehicles, right?
Yes, six.
Sixty-six. So four of them are part of this program. So Richie, this program that we have with the four, are they, are we locked in with them?
No, we don't have any program, they're all bought outright, they belong to us, everything we've got belongs to us. No, we, we don't have, all those, all the vehicles we own and, and have for the over 25 years I've been here, every police vehicle we have, we have bought outright and we own it. There is no, we don't lease, we have looked at lease options, but you know, that, that's, that's a whole nother ballgame, but that puts us at four. So how many on the, the high one has 80,000?
So you want to take the Charger off and add three, so you're basically, you're trying to get.
You're adding actually two. So you're going to have.
Trying to get to eight.
You'll have eight, yes, you'll have eight. Yeah, you'll have eight, which is still below our neighboring, you know, the departments our size normally, you know? Um, but which is fine though, we don't have to have, I mean, we just need more than what we got. I mean, that's, I mean, if I told you, we, you know, I wish I could tell you, we need three, but you know, well, really we only need one or really we only need two. But the truth is, we need three because we need to get rid of one.
Do you think the 250s still be?
Yeah, 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 we've done it, we, we, we put the pencil to it real tight.
That includes everything.
Yeah, yeah, everything. I mean, we, we put the pencil to it because again, if you put an admin vehicle, it's not going to cost quite as much. It's going to be a little less and, and then how we do the other vehicles, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, yeah, we can do it with that easy. We've put the pencil to it numerous times. Well, here's the deal, the problem that some people probably don't want a take home car, I mean, it, it probably creates, you know, I mean, you know, I think, I think what you ought to do is let the, when I retire, let the next chief, you know? And, and you know, go try to find a good chief, I'm suggesting a world wide search, leave out the communist countries. Okay, so what I would suggest, so what, I thought that was funny, there didn't get no. But anyway, uh, I would say let that, some, that's something you're going to have to work towards. Because even Zach, when he was in Spring Valley, you know, they all had take home cars. Did Dickerson, did they have take home cars or? Have did, so here, we don't have anybody with take home cars. So if you hire another police chief, you know, I don't have a take home vehicle. Our animal control director and those people had take home cars for years, our public works directors had a take home car for probably 30 years. I just take mine home because we don't have a lot, if it's like I'm working that weekend or it's like a holiday period or then we've got weather coming in, then I'll, you know, take, take the vehicle home. So, cause.
I think eventually we'll probably look at that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not something where.
I will tell you this, I will tell you this, there's some of the departments right now around us that are looking at going back out of it.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's a million things.
Different reasons that are going out there, so.
Yeah, and we're not anywhere where we could implement that right now anyway. I mean, we're, you know, I'm just saying that we need some more, you know, cars and, and some people are going to want, I mean, we've got, there's two Honda policemen that live, one in, just barely in the sea limits and one right out of sea limits. That, you know, they drive those cars from Hondo, Pleasanton's got people that live on the north side of San Antonio that, that drive vehicles, which to me is a taxpayer. I mean, if a person's on call and they serve special, you know, they've got a special need, then, then I understand it. But you know, everybody just having a take home car to me is, 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 is wasteful. Now, now, when you worked for Pleasanton, you had a, yeah, he worked for Pleasanton, he had a take home car, he took right here to Littler. So again, it's not a great thing, it's not really what we're even looking for right now, we just need some more cars. We just need some work cars right now, you know? We can always, we always pay to Uber people. Well, there's a lot of people buying stuff like that because there's, you know, there, there, uh, one of the big, uh, school districts in Austin, Dell Valley, I think they created a police department in the Dell Valley and they went with that. So anyway, go ahead.
Anything?
That's kind of where we are. Yeah, really, that's it. I mean, that's really our main concern. Obviously, you know, we have to keep the salaries moving up, you know? We wouldn't have filled these two positions if our, if our, if our pay would have been a dollar less an hour, I can tell you. Cause I know where the people came from, I know what they're making. It's still a competitive world, you know, there's a lot, you know, you've got new police department, Medina Valley just posted last day or two, they're trying to hire policemen, I don't know what the pay was. But you know, the school district over there, so as these departments expand, it's a lot of work, but we're fortunate. We've been able to, you know, maintain people and, and as long as we, uh, can, you know, keep on the positive, we're going to be okay. We've done it, we've been, it's worked for us, but that's really it, cars. The rest of the stuff, I think, unless I'm, you know, missing something, is all just kind of the basic junk that we kind of always have, that's kind of gets inflated because it just got inflated by nothing we're doing.
Right, let's see, what time is it, it's 8:09, uh, counselor, if it's okay, let's go ahead and take a, like 10 minute break. Okay.
Yeah, that's good. They were a little bit of fun. Nothing wrong with that.
Somebody out there. Oh, okay. You know.
Really?
I hear it.
It's getting a snack. He just said, it's okay. It's getting a smoothie snack.
We're just, you know.
Okay, uh, Paul, if you can go ahead and show us back at eight twenty-four and we'll go ahead and move on. And we're still in item number, we're still in item.
Number five, and we're finishing up on the last portion with the, all the miscellaneous along with City Hall. Go ahead, Zach.
So I'll start with the admin side, just kind of going over some of the big ticket items. A real small increase on the audit, but that matches what our new auditing charge is going to be. Little bit of an increase in appraisal districts. We don't know what that final number is going to be, but from the appraisal districts as far as their budgets, we're just now starting to get that in. But I built in a slight increase. It seems to increase every year. Small uptick in office supplies and postage and office technology.
Zach, on.
Yeah.
On the office technology, did you, did you guys include anything within code that we need to?
We have not yet. Not yet.
So anything that we can look at, I know we talked about billing, you know, maybe something better, easier for folks to be able to do that if it's a little bit more efficient. So maybe look into that. See if we have.
Not a problem. Um, let's see. I didn't plug anything in for insurance, so that's why that's off, but we'll make sure to get that filled in. The election expense, I went up five thousand on that. We know there's a good chance we could have an election. Obviously, we've seen those increases come, you know, so we just kind of putting a number out there. The legal notices, those have been going up. We've been obviously doing a lot more things that we have to post for, so they're just naturally kind of where we're seeing increases there. Let's see, another big increase, probably the, one of the bigger ones is on the volunteer fire department. So adding forty-eight thousand, so the contribution from one oh-two to one hundred and fifty. We've gotten wind that Bear County funding for the fire department has gone away. Bear County moving further into their area and taking over more of their territory. So in meeting with Roger, they haven't made a formal request, but in talking with the mayor and I about just some of their challenges of making sure that they can maintain two individuals over there. We felt like it would be necessary to try to increase our contribution to them, and so I just stuck a number with one fifty, just a nice round number. And see where that landed us once we calculate everything, and if we need to back it out, we can, but at least adding a little more to the, to the kitty for them.
Just the volunteer, right? Like.
Yes.
Pay a couple.
No, they're, they're, I think from my experience, far as that's the way, it is basically a, a, a part, it is done with part-time. Definitely not home. And I think the, the budget I got, the other budget I got.
So we're pretty close. Yeah, and we haven't seen that here yet, so yeah, so.
So why don't you do this, Zach? Why don't you go ahead and bump it up to one sixty?
One sixty.
Yeah, just put it, give it a push. I do have a question. So.
Yeah.
On the ambulance building.
Yes.
One down.
Yes.
We've actually spent a lot less this year than we have.
Yeah.
So we, so we still, we still have some availability with that to be able to consider for the next option for them, right?
Yes.
Okay, out of this year's budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's good to know.
So if the funding that's being produced or learned in Bear County, responsibility, responsibility go as well?
In, in theory, yes, to a certain extent. I mean, obviously mutual aid is still a thing, right? So they've had to respond to, I think, you know, some of the crashes we've had right on the line, right, and in Bear County. So there's still that kind of aspect. Yeah, but there, we are adding, if you remember now, we're gonna, you know, here soon, we're gonna be adding the data center to their responsibility, you know, in that area. So as much as we're taking away, we are adding other areas, so.
It was different to Bear County. It's actually kind of probably, I know it's from a cost a little more money, it's probably a better benefit because they're down there. Most of their calls are into Bear County with fire EMS runs, and those don't exist anymore.
Yeah, so they're getting a lot of.
They're being here for.
The ru, the routine calls, right?
Yeah.
Normal routine.
Yeah, they don't have very many mutual aid.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's good. It's good. And it's also good in a sense it just saves overall. Emergency management, I was surprised. So we're doing really good on that account, huh?
Yes, yeah.
But we are gonna spend some money.
We are, we have some pending invoices coming, but, you know, we, I will say traditionally, we have not gotten up to that sixty every year. So I mean, if there's some cost savings, we could pull that down if we wanted to, but we've traditionally kept it at sixty for that. I'm sure during the winter storm and stuff like that, y'all saw higher costs in that respect, but.
I think we have it for miscellaneous.
It looking, not the issue we have is our recent going up. They have a new program there within the same company, and it, they, I have to look more into it, but basically you can set your sirens off from a computer or the phone or the radio, but the computer is constantly talking and monitoring the sirens. So the second one goes offline and tells you. So that may be something, I don't look cost, I don't, you know, but maybe something we could venture into.
Yeah, definitely, even if we can use some.
New age of.
I know we still have, and council, especially for the new, just so you know, so Matt is definitely, even though the lead at EMC is falls in, in the mayor's position, but Matt is pretty much a lead with that. So he's fully aware of all the stuff that is happening with the emergency management side of the house and stuff. And we're always looking at things that we want to do and be able to bring, bring a better, you know, in a sense of preparation for our city. So there's a few things. I know, Matt, I know that we also are waiting for the stuff to come down from the county with the, the generators and the quick connects, so.
Yes.
Yes. So, but if, if we get resolution and they don't cover some of these things, we definitely need to spend this year. We gotta get those quick connects and those other facilities.
Generator, like, they're popping back up on the government surplus website, and, and good generators that are coming back from the military that we can go pick up for a fraction of the cost. I'm talking about the things we use for community. I think I just saw one pop up the other day.
Yeah, so we might have some money.
Perhaps. Let's go.
So we might have some money that we might be able to use, we use for that, and we use it for multiple purposes, but definitely the quick, the quick connects, Matt, we definitely need to do that and get those.
Good question, um.
Yeah.
The office technology.
Yes.
I, I don't know if this is related to it, but have you, plus, I corrected any issues for communication between each center and the main building? Are you talking about keep speaking as?
Yeah, it seemed, other than recently when Spectrum just went out just randomly because of the weather that we've had. Yeah, it seems to be working just fine now. They haven't had any reported issues in several months, so we seem to be doing pretty good now.
So we can, if we need to go to that, select to, to the center.
Yes.
We can go.
Yes.
Been here recently with the help of Sub Zero?
Yes.
Yeah, so now they, they were figuring out a way without having to knock a hole. We're getting a plenum rerouted, so we have AC inside in there. It's not gonna look pretty, but it's gonna push some air in there.
And they'll. That's all it needs.
They'll keep the electronics nice and cool in that room because it does get pretty hot. So that, that's also gonna, that's also gonna help me in able to do that.
So the, I made a note for myself, but we had, obviously the, the grant consulting there was obviously for EMC. Not in this version that y'all saw or you're seeing, but since today, Yvonne and I have moved some of those consulting, the grant consulting, the consulting engineer line item that had nothing budgeted last year or this year. Consolidating some of those just to professional fees, which shows up earlier in the budget, so. Not sure if we're gonna need, or where, where we stand with the grant, you know, aspect of it. Obviously, we're gonna still continue to try to find grants and, you know, we have the GLO one we're after for the comp plan and stuff like that. So there's still some costs that are still associated, even if we're not with EMC, but we've, we are consolidating all those kind of professional fees within admin under one, you know, line item there. So that, that might slightly change as you see it today.
No, that's good. I mean, there's gonna be opportunities, stuff that is gonna pop up that we might be able to.
And if it's small enough stuff, you know, there's, there's ways that if, you know, staff is taking care of it, we can get reimbursement back for the admin portion instead of having like Grant Works or Kimberly Horn handling some of those. So there's, there's ways to, to continue there. The, there's two kind of stormwater or drainage related ones on here. Basically, we would remove that from the admin. That's why there's nothing budgeted, and we would actually move that to stormwater utility, so.
Be its own separate.
Correct.
Good.
So those will be pulled out there. We've, not on this version, but we have consolidated some of the street related items as well, but that'll stay under the admin portion at this point. But really, that's, that's really the only big changes in the admin portion. I just hadn't put it in yet. That was my bad.
So take a look, take a look, and not for tonight, but just take a look at the street repairs.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be time again based on how, how many years we usually go in between. And we try to save, like, the two years, we don't use that money, we save it up, and we try to put it all together, you know, after multiple years, and then we go out and, and, and do some streets. Matt, the last one that we did, that was maybe about two and a half years ago, two, two years?
I'd have to go look at it, but no name of a hundred thousand every year.
Two years, right? Yeah, but, yeah.
And normally, it's always been a hundred thousand every year.
Yeah, because I think, so if it's two, so it's been two years, yeah, so two and a half right now, yeah, two and a half right now would be this next, yeah.
Well, street lighting is what we're, like, we're having to pay for all the streetlights with CPS and AEP.
Those are ones.
Reliant and all that, so, yeah.
Yeah, but let's, let's look at that one, and if we can, we can, because I know we, we, we try to, we don't do it every year, but we try to do it to where we go around, and then we get inputs from the council, you know, which streets are the ones.
Made a note of that. I do have, on that aspect, I do have Kimberly Horn looking at actually finding somebody that can actually drive all the streets and give us some data on what the streets look like, so. Well, yeah, so. Do what?
As long as we don't get charged too much. Yeah, I mean, we, we do have the old list, but we also take into consideration the usage. There are some roads that, that have, but they're, they're low usage. So I know the council in the past has actually prioritized other streets that have a lot more throughput. Based on, on the volume that goes through that, but all, all in all, is, is just make sure we kind of keep that in back of mind.
Yeah, made a note for that.
Look, look at that for us to look as we use to take care of that. Anything else on that one, council?
No.
Okay.
All right, community center. Really no change here. I didn't add the workers' comp, so just like the last one, I needed to go in and add that one. And then deposit refunds, we took a thousand out of that, but there's some changes that are come that Yvonne and I did today, even some of that, so. But really, no, no change per se on the community. Yeah, so that's actually gonna come out. That was one of those, if you look, it's like in the, the revenue as well, and then you have it at the, but that was, that was the CD. So I don't know why it was being listed that way. It's really, I mean, it's already been moved to like textbook, and we're just getting interest on it and stuff like that, so. Once we have actual projects and we can put those in there and, yeah.
Because one of the things we were talking about is the remodeling.
Yes. Yeah, so we need, we need the foundation, we need the engineer to, to give us something on that, and then we have had somebody go in and just make some cosmetic type things here recently. They painted the bathrooms, painted the back wall of the stage that had some real bad issues. And, yeah, so just as we're starting to make just general cosmetic stuff.
If you go into the restrooms, and they did a real good job, they used to have wallpaper and they were peeling, and they just look all dark. Now it's all white paint. It looks a lot brighter. It's nicer. It's cleaner. And then the back splash wall too, it's a lot more presentable.
Yes.
You know, in a sense of you're taking photos or anything like that, so it's good. There's still a little bit more work to do, but it's.
That was intended to be. Part of it is the foundation issue.
I know.
But, yeah.
We're thinking of some of the good cosmetic stuff, you know, so it's good.
So that's community center, council's portion, nothing changed on that. Still the same council meeting supplies and the council allowance there, unless y'all have any questions about that one. Municipal courts. So a lot of this is changing. As you see on the actuals from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, we've never really had this straight. Part of it was, it was under PD for a time, you know, some of those line items, so it's been, it's been moving constantly, so. A lot of this probably from what you see today will, will change, so I don't want to go too much into detail, but obviously we're increasing where, you know, just the general normal, you know, fines across the board and just, you know, some of the usual increases that we see. But nothing other than that is. know, some of the usual increases that we see, but nothing other than that is changing. So.
For Purdue, do we pay to send the events out and do you see any? I know we're getting those out, but do you see anything from them? Or is it pretty much a wash?
It's supposed to be a wash. Supposed to be a wash.
I think, I think we're getting some in now, because we were sending them prior, they weren't getting fresh data. So our girls, I think, are doing better now, sending fresher data, so they're getting, like, us more, trying to pressure the information quicker than first, they're paying.
How much do they look in?
All of it. This is the way the contract is built out.
Why are we using it?
So they collect.
I know, so they collect, I'm saying a hundred bucks, right? They're gonna get a hundred bucks off it. These are collections if we're not seeing anything else.
Yeah. I can pull, I can pull the, I'll pull the information we have on it, but normally that's, that's normally a, a wash there, so.
I think, exactly. Yeah.
But that's, that's why if you look at the revenue portion, it's the Purdue revenue is 60,000, but then literally it matches up completely to, so it's, you have in and you have out.
There's a percentage. Yeah, take a look at it, peel the onion, because I think there's a percentage.
We'll, we'll pull.
Watch the top hour, sixty tickets, but I'm just saying, like.
Yeah.
What's the use of them making it, the kind of, finds a ticket to?
Yes. We're getting our ticket, we're getting our ticket.
Yes. Purdue is only getting that additional.
Correct.
Second interest.
Yes, yes. Yeah. But, but what they're charging, they're getting back, yes. Yeah, yeah, that's the wash.
Yeah, okay, I think we're.
Yes.
We still get our fine.
Correct, yeah. They don't, they don't collect the whole fine, yeah.
Do we have, do we have a line item for the associate judge on here?
Yes, the, well, that's the magistrate fees, so I actually decreased that just slightly, so.
So is that inside the magistrate fee?
Yes.
Or should we track it differently because it's, 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 I mean, we're paying somebody?
That's how we're, we've always placed it, but we can definitely track it separately if that's something council wants.
But I think for associate, if we're paying somebody, we gotta keep it separate. It's not a fee, you know?
I mean, most of the time, the associate judge, that's all they are doing is the magistrate. That's why they called it that.
Well, some, some of the past ones, didn't they actually, is it as needed?
Yeah, but very, very few.
Well, if they're, if they're asked needed, I get it, but I know that there's some judges actually charged per month whether they magistrate or not.
Sure. So the way, but we would build it into the contract that it would only be as.
As needed, okay.
So that's why we've kept it as that. I think before we had it as, it was a flat fee across the.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking.
And we, when, at council's direction, changed that, so we build it appropriately in the contract. That's where they've always stuck it because that's all traditionally they, the associate judge has been doing.
That's what they were hired for, was to magistrate, they call them minions.
Yeah.
So that's why they got started calling it that. So it really is not, really it's an associate judge.
Yeah. We can just rename it appropriately.
Pay the fee, that's, that's, you said somebody out there doesn't come in.
No, that's, that's how it's, should be out of course, security funds, that's the money that we pay off or come in or pay.
Doesn't go back to the.
Separate. No, but this is, you see, those are the things, just be able to put them in there. Anything, council, on that? Nothing?
Sorry, just making my notes.
No, that's good.
Okay, parks, the real, the, really the only change here is in the miscellaneous park equipment. It, it appears we have not spent anything in that, but I do believe if you go down to, to repairs and maintenance, I think some of that was miscoded, so it needs to be in miscellaneous park equipment, so we'll double check on that. But the 600 additional there is, we need a new riding lawnmower for parks, and the one they have is barely getting them by. And so we got a quote for that for Public Works, and so just based on that price, getting for both of them, so getting two total, but one out of this budget portion.
Six hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Why don't we spend two thousand dollars on the zero?
They can do whatever you would like.
They're, they're, they're more commercial grade, they're gonna have to make the, well, they can't, there's no.
I know what you mean, yeah.
They're very.
Versatile. Versatile.
At least have somebody cutting the parts outside of him.
Yes. Yeah, so the, and I know the point.
Spending money on, in, in a nice zero turn.
And that was, so the point was, when I, when I brought in the, the new gentleman Julian for the parks, that was a conversation that him and I had, and I said, I need to know what kind of equipment is necessary to make that change a reality, because that was council directed, that they wanted to, for him to take over more of that portion, that was what was built in the job description. And he basically said, with that mower, there's no way I can move, I can do that. So that's why we were looking at adding that to the budget so we could actually make that transition going.
Zero turn, thirty degrees uses amount of time.
Yeah.
I would say we're spending money on that, spending money on that versus hiring somebody to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could look into that.
Yes, we can get a different quote to determine the price and adjust accordingly.
Have we had a contract?
We are, but it, it changes over October, so I mean, this will be the time to do it.
You have to give a.
No.
Five days.
It's a very basic contract. Yes.
We also talked about other options.
Yes, yes.
Yep. Anything else on park? The only thing on this one, Zach, I would say if we, there's still some money available in there, I would definitely go pay attention to the pavilion.
Yeah.
And, and the restrooms and all that, so if we need to, just like we've done in some of the other places.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, I mean, like I said, the, the repairs and maintenance has been, you know, is, we budgeted 20 this year, we spent 32, but I think some of that is supposed to be under the park equipment, so it just got miscoded, so we're real tight with where we're at, but if there is any, obviously we'll try to capitalize on it.
What money do we make from the events, there's the big events? Does that come out of there? Does that money come to the city? Is that money that we can touch?
Well, we don't make any money.
We don't make any money. We're not supposed to make any money.
Well, I thought we were having vendors.
So the vendors, so for like Music Fest, the vendors have traditionally been handled by The Chamber, so that was not money that we ever saw. We paid for the production side of that Music Fest, so it, it was about, you know, 30,000, give or take, 30, 35,000 is what we've spent, and that's out of our hot tax expense. We, for 4th of July, we spent 20,000 on fireworks, get five back from waste management, but we don't, you know, we don't get anything off of that. And then, you know, Hayride, we get a little bit of money, but we split that and goes back to the pantries. So, but it's, it's very minimal.
And the vendors?
To me, I don't want an event like that, we should make something that goes back to the city. I mean, you're doing it for Santa, you're making money for Santa, I'd go make something off of your events. That's just my thoughts.
It, it is very difficult for, especially in like a city park, for us to make money legally on the use of a open public park. So, I mean, we, I can definitely speak with legal, but there are, yeah.
And just so you know, the, what The Chamber uses the money that they get from the vendors is the money they use for the scholarships. It goes back to the scholarships they give out to kids, so.
That's what the cities can see what they're doing, and I think we should be able to profit off of that. Mayor, that's my thoughts.
Be bueno, bueno, bueno.
So that's it on the budget per se, unless there's any questions on that. The only other ones that I wanted to go over included in the packet was, we did get the breakdown for health and benefits, and so it did come back at 6.7% of an increase, so I was pretty close with my 6%. The, that would be keeping the same rates as we currently have, and that's what is built in, in the numbers you see in the budget. Something I don't think y'all have seen in the past, or at least maybe for some time, is they have provided additional options that could be explored by council if you also choose. And so I needed, on this particular item, I just need some direction on if we're good with just staying with the same plan we have, running with that, or any of the options. It does, there are two options that make that increase less of an increase, but, and then there's two options that actually decrease from our current rate. But the problem with that is, there is very, I would say, what would be very marginal benefit, if not any, to the employees themselves. Potential out-of-pocket costs increasing, things like that. But I wanted to make sure that y'all saw all the options that they're offering before y'all, so y'all can make that decision.
So Zach?
Yes.
And council, if it's okay, can we go ahead and get our department heads to give us inputs on which option they would prefer?
Sure.
Let me just, I'll give them that option. But, like, grab 3% now, right?
The salaries?
Salaries?
Yeah.
And you're at, or insurance, or can you, or contract buy, are you gonna go to this option on the insurance? That's the duck more support. I can give him some.
I know, I know Chief Priest mentioned that, that, that. Duck, duck was one of the biggest selling points.
Yeah.
We should at least stay at that. Yes, at least.
So, ask me for my. Here. So, here's the deal, and I tell them is that you've only got three employees that depend on covering, okay? All right?
They're, they're covering their.
Yeah, Zach with a contract, Matt, Roger and I out of pocket, okay? Well, here's the deal, if we lower this, we get a little less money, so I say a hundred dollars a month, but everybody else in the city's gonna get the bad end of the stick and me too, because your, your stuff goes up, you know, your, so going backwards is definitely not the answer. We need to stick where we are because we're not gonna, it's not gonna benefit anyone. I mean, truth is, I mean, if it was gonna benefit me at, you know, 700 dollars a month, it'd be something, I'd say, well, hey, think about this. But the issue is, what, what is it, what does it cost to put dependents on there? And it's if you have a wife or you have a wife and five kids, which is what I pay.
Under what they're currently or the new rate?
The new rate.
The new rate is $2,236.82.
A month.
That's what I pay a month to have my family on there. Now, if you want to go to Medina County website, if you go work in Medina County, I put my whole family, medical, dental, vision, everything.
Actually, it's a little less than that, I apologize, because, yeah, because that's including the employee portion that we pay, I apologize.
We pay the employee 400.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we pay the employee, mine's actually around 14, it's around 1400 a month, but I'll pay, but I'll keep paying. But, not somewhere else, not, if I go to the city of Hondo, if I go to the city of Pluston, they're gonna pay 50% dependent coverage, okay? So that's something that y'all as a council, my career is towards the end here, you know, relatively speaking, as the city grows, you're not gonna be able to compete. If, if monsters start having families, if Matt's wife got a contracted job and he has the kids on the insurance, he'll retire the next, he'll retire two weeks from now and he'll get a job where he has me. So that's, and it's not just him, it's numerous employees we have, that's something we're gonna have to look at in the future, but for now, please don't lower because health insurance is, that's the reason I work here. I mean, I love the job, but I have my family on insurance, that's what keeps me, that's why I'm, I mean, that's why I'm here, because I mean, I could go back to modeling.
Yeah, so just the medical alone for the.
You look familiar now.
On the dependent, the medical alone under the new rate is 1437. So 1,437 for the, for, to car, carry a dependent, and that's just on the medical, there, I mean, obviously it's minimal cost on the dental and vision, but that, that does add.
So on the, on the new rate, do you have a current plan in the new rate? Is that comparable to option one?
It's similar to option one, the, the only change under option one, if I'm not mistaken, is there is a higher out-of-pocket maximum, it goes up by 1,000 under option one. Everything else under that stays the same, but you're really only saving, I mean, a couple, you know, maybe like 30 bucks, honestly, under that option.
Yeah, I think it's better just to stay with.
Again, I have no dog in the fight, I just wanted to be able to present y'all the options that were presented to us.
The only thing is it just goes up a little bit, right? That's it?
Yeah, it's still gonna be an increase, it's just less of an increase, so.
Yeah, it just goes along with that.
So overall, my recommendation is that all departments look at training and education. We've got some new personnel coming in, we still have some on the book that they can be filled. Pay trainings can be a big part of how successful we are in the future. We need to put a lot of emphasis on training and education. Everybody wants to get certifications. We, we talked about this in council before, we benefit from these certifications. So if each party can take a look at that.
Yeah. And, and I will say, not as much in the admin side of like the general fund, but I know in water and sewer, a lot of that's already built into the salaries as a potential, because obviously the hope is that we encourage them and they go and they get it taken care of and then we can pay them more. So some of that's already gonna be built in, obviously, you know, at the end of the day.
Oh, that's.
We all, everybody but the chief, I reckon, that's the council issue for the two years ago, I think they should, sorry for that.
He had to go do a video modeling, so.
The last little thing that I have, so I know some of y'all gave me an actual ranking, some of y'all I didn't get, that's okay, on the priorities. So I have the final list, so I will pass those out, I will also send them electronically for everybody as well, but this is with the final list of adding or subtracting ones from the, the ranking list.
Did you get every, every council member?
I did not get everybody's. I did not get everybody's. So I'm basing it off of what we have at this point.
So you want us to rank them now?
So, the one, so, so Zach?
You send them when, because I haven't seen yours.
So Zach, let's pass them out, council, if it's okay, let's pass them out and let's go ahead and scratch off the ones that we want to scratch, and then you send the new one out and then have everybody rank them.
Well, and I already scratched like three or four that I, we had already paid for or were in the works, like the baseball field.
So if you were to receive, if you don't receive.
Yes. No, I do not need it again. Yes.
Okay, but some of these, okay, these are the ones. Okay, but this one already.
I incorporated what I have gotten from people.
Okay.
Okay? And I took off three or four that were already determined as, so if, if I got it from you and you added anything, those are on there.
Okay.
Now you just need rank order.
Well, if, if, what the mayor, what you're saying is, let council continue to add for the ones that I haven't gotten from.
Now, if this is a final one, unless we have anything, but I do have a question.
Sure.
At a full-time position at City Hall, what is?
That one was, that put on there last year, but no one asked, I, I don't know what it was for, don't know what it was intended to be, but it was put on there last year, so.
The one I remember that that might have tied in was for us to add somebody to the, under the finance.
We did. Could have been, but I think it was, we had already, when I went back, we had already added Ronnie, and then the council priorities came out, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, we can remove that one.
Yeah, I would, I would take that one off.
Okay.
I'll take that one off on there.
Yeah, I mean.
Part-time, part-time employee in parks.
Yes, that was added by somebody this. Yes, that was added by somebody this time.
Okay, so add an extra one to the full-time.
Correct, well, a part-time, yes.
Okay. Play, play, study, parking in Main Street area, and purification street.
The ones I removed were baseball field lighting, there was some, the comp plan, I think.
Yeah.
Might have removed, or changed that a little bit, and then the, there was a couple other ones that we'd already secured. Oh, plugging of wealth re, that kind of stuff.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So there's seventeen. There's seventeen in.
Is out the full-time?
Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
But a couple had been added this time, so, yeah, that might, I think I took off four, and at least two got added, for sure. So that makes sense.
Okay, so, so we don't, we, you have a little bit of time, just go ahead and scratch the add full-time position at City Hall. Just scratch that, okay? If, if you, if you can, if you can just, if you can just, if you want to take it home, and just rank order. Your number one is number one, your lease is number seventeen, okay? So rank order them, you can either drop it off, you can scan it, send it in, or if you got it electronically, you can just do it electronically, whichever way, but. There you go, and do that.
Now you're making it two.
Which one? Hold on, one at a time. No, it's there.
Miscellaneous street.
It's right there, miscellaneous street, baby.
It's there, and there's also, there's also one more specific, I think, street and drainage.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah. It's, it's slightly changed from what you sent, so that's why I'm, yeah, all right.
So rank order one through seventeen, and either drop it off by tomorrow, close the business, or email it, or whichever. Okay, whichever way you want to do it. If you want to stay behind after the meeting and do it, and then give it to Zach, you can go ahead and do that, but just, uh, let's go ahead and turn it in, so we can take care of that, okay? I just need your, you, the council's inputs. Cool beans? All right, Zach. Anything else, council? I think this was very productive, we got a little bit of everything from every department of what we needed to do. We also had the input based on our water and wastewater study. It sounds like we'll need to make some adjustments based on, on some charges that we need to kind of incorporate, but overall, we're doing well, if we really think about it, we're doing very well compared to other communities around here, but we need to plan for the future, and this is a time for, go ahead and take that first step, to be able to take care of that. So I really want to say thank you to Zach, Yvonne, I know you guys have been working really hard on this and putting the numbers and everything, we appreciate it. We look forward to our continued workshops, be able to take care, our next one is just gonna be the regular meeting, right? Okay? And then we'll figure out for the next meeting, we're still doing good on the calendar, based on the rate, or the times that we get at the rate adjustments and all that stuff we need to do. But if nobody, nobody has anything, I don't need a motion, since it's a workshop, it is nine oh three, and we'll go ahead and call for a chairman, okay?